Okay, seeing that it is 7:00 PM on Thursday, June 1st, believe it or not already. I'm gonna start and call to order a Sherborn Select Board, and I'd like to ask the Assistant Town Administrator to please read the agenda.
Good evening. Now that you've opened the session and I read the agenda, the Select Board can amend or approve the agenda. We do have, I believe, a public comment tonight. No, no public comment. Sorry about that. Items can be taken out of order and topics not anticipated 48 hours in advance can be added. Item number one is the consideration of town council agreement for fiscal year 2024 to 2026. Chris Petrini from Petrini Associates is here. There's a presentation of a climate resiliency and action plan by Dorothy Vaughn Herter, our sustainability coordinator. Consideration of annual appointments to various boards and committees. Item number four is Mass General Law, Chapter 90, Section 17C, 18B, implementation of 245 mile per hour speed limit and establishment of safety zones with 20 mile an hour speed limits. Sean Colleen, DPW Director. Item number five is the presentation of the town organizational chart with Jerry Marsetat, our town administrator, and he's also going to bring forward tonight a discussion of select board goals, draft first review. Item number seven is consideration of special legislation for an exemption from Chapter 30B to lease the Mount Misery cell tower at 2012 Lake Street for up to 25 years. The consent agenda, there is no payroll warrant for tonight. The draft minutes of April 20th, 2023 are next meeting dates of June 9th, 2023, July 15th, which is the FY 23 year-end transfers. Item number nine is consideration of routine business and select board reports and town administrator reports.
Mr. Chair?
Me myself, you could go ahead. Go ahead, Paul. I'm sorry.
I have proposed addition to the agenda, which would be an item that was not known to the chair 48 hours in advance. And it has to do with a green light letter for a bond anticipation note for Woodhaven.
Yep, that's, that's good. So I'll go ahead and second it since we already discussed it. And do we need to vote on adding that to the agenda or just approve the agenda as edited?
Yep. But where do you want to put it on the agenda? Last first?
Why don't we just do it first? Get it over with. Heidi will be happy with this.
Okay.
It was not gonna take more than a second. So why don't we do that? Is that all right, Heidi? So anyway, she wanted it last, I'm pretty sure. So I take a motion to approve the agenda as modified by Paul. I seconded it. So Eric?
I?
Even?
I.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well. And I should just note for the audience that our other select board member is Marian is giving the high school commencement address tonight. So she has a legitimate excuse, but she'll maybe join us late. So given that addition, then our first order of business will be, will be that signing of the bond commitment note. What'd you call it, Paul? It's a green letter, right?
Green light letter. Yes, for bond anticipation note.
Okay.
So perhaps Heidi should introduce it?
Sure.
Explain it to the voters.
You're, you're a little quiet, Heidi. You might have to get a little.
Okay, sorry. Trying a new room, so I don't know how this is working.
That's better.
Okay, so this is, the Department of Local Services has asked for an extra step on this borrowing because it's over 10 years old. Is one of the big difference. And there were so many different variables that happened, different turnovers of people. It was hard to get the history. They did caution me that this is not the intention of borrowing to have had something drag on this long to keep piecemealing it. But we need this one borrowing because Woodhaven has some units. So I'd like to finish out this amount. And in order to do so, they would ask, they asked for what's called a green light letter, which gives you okay where, where I've attached the history of what Woodhaven, the history of the borrowing, the authorizations from 2012. And I think there's gonna be 25,000 that's still left unissued, but we may have to actually rescind that at next town meeting and prepare a new vote to go forward. They would have preferred that we just did individual borrowings as opposed to over 10-year borrowing.
Okay. That sounds fine. I think we need to do what we need to do in the near term, but we know what to do going forward. So.
Right, right. And this one, to get signed, I'll be in the office then tomorrow between like 8:00 and 9:00 if anyone wants to hard copy sign it. Or if they want to print this off, sign it, scan it back into me. I'll just clip them all together that way to get the.
Cause I won't, I won't be here. I'm leaving early in the morning, like 6:00 in the morning. So do you need everyone to sign or is it three of us?
They need, three would be enough. Just, you know, show a support. I think DLS really wants to make sure that we're aware of this issue.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's why I said if people just, we want to print it off, sign their signature on at one and scan it back in, I'll, I'll put them all together. You know, to compile as one.
Send it to me tonight. I can print it, but I'll be on the road. I won't be able to do that remotely.
Oh, I think Jeremy already sent it. The letter was sent this afternoon.
Is it in that included? I saw the email. So that has the actual letter in it, Jeremy?
Right.
Yeah, it does. It's the letter and the attachments that go along with it. The town, town staff have already signed the letter. It's just pending the select board signatures.
That's fine. Then I'll just print it tonight and send it to you.
Great.
I assume then Heidi, if, if printing, signing, scanning and sending it to you is okay, can I just straight digital sign it?
Sure. I mean, I think that that should count. I mean, it's, we're Zoom meetings.
So we can digitally sign this because is it a PDF? Sometimes it's a PDF. You can't do that.
I'm not sure what format it was sent, Jeremy.
All right, we'll see. I ran.
It was a scanned PDF.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unless you have Adobe Professional, you can't sign it, I don't think.
Okay. And Eric and Paul.
Steven, do you know how to do it, Steven?
I usually do it on my Mac. So sometimes on the Mac PDF application, you can, you can just throw your signature anywhere. Usually the ones where I can't do that is if the PDF has been specifically locked from, from doing that.
Huh, I don't know. I couldn't do the, whatever we have to sign for the library, I couldn't sign that. And I use a MacBook Pro anyway.
Hmm. So I don't know. I'll give it a try digitally if I can, then I'll print it out and sign it and then scan it back to you.
Sounds good.
Eric and Paul, what would work for you?
I'll stop by.
I'll stop by in the morning.
If you may be, Heidi, reach out to Marion. If she doesn't join us tonight.
Okay. Okay. No, thank you. I think if we just have a vote of the board to show it, that'll, I can let them know that as well. They'll have a record.
So can I make a motion to, to send the letter and the form that has been presented?
Okay. And do I have a second?
Oh, a second.
All right. Thank you. I'm twisted, twisted arms here. Eric?
I.
Even?
I.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Four to zero, Diane.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I started to realize that George was such a common mover that I kind of get a little lazy.
I know, I know, I know. I gotta.
Maybe I'll take over that spot.
You gotta, you gotta be in the hot seat. All right. So next, now we're back to the original agenda with town council agreement, which we actually voted on, I believe, two weeks ago, and the final version was sent to us tonight to look at. Paul raised a question on the fees. I don't think your question was quite accurate, Paul. They, they kept two attorneys at the same rate. They, Heather was new to the firm, so they increased her to the same rate as those two attorneys. So they're all three attorneys are at the same rate. And then Chris slightly increased his fee. So two stayed the same. One was new and was at a lower rate, and now she's at the same as the other principals of the firm. And Chris is a little bit above that as the owner of the firm or the founder of the firm. Do you want to, am I correct in anything I misstated, Chris?
Yeah, I can show the agreement. Maybe we could, if you're, if you're a famous Mr. Chair, we can kind of run through.
Fine, if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, sure. All right. Is that showing up as a screen share? Can you?
It is. Yep, that's perfect. Yep.
All right. So anyway, you saw that, you saw the cover, the cover memo here as well explaining the key, the key changes. But what I did, what I'm proposing is I used the last agreement as a, as a template and then made red line changes to it. And so the change is shown in red line out what is different from the 2020 agreement. So page one is just that the effective date would change from August 1 of 2020 to July 1 of 2023 this year. Same thing, the term would then be the three-year term of July 1 of 2023 to July 1 of 20, June 30th rather, of 2026 and under the preamble. Hold on a second here. Let me just move down. I won't take much time. This will be, this will be quick and make it easier to see. Legal services just changing. That was just a typo change in Board of Select when the Select Board under number one. And then this on page two, you'll see that in talking with Jeremy, we observed that there's a town bylaw that actually officially requires that the town council be reappointed every year. That doesn't change the fact that the board can enter into a longer agreement, but I don't know historically that whether that's been done. I was gonna check it, Diane. I didn't have a chance. But the town council should be reappointed every year to comply with that bylaw. If that doesn't happen, however, there's a holdover clause in another section of Chapter 3, which basically says, and this applies to any officer in the town, that anyone in the town who is willing to, who serves in a capacity, whose term expires, they continue to serve in that capacity until they're replaced. That's called what they call a holdover clause under the, and the bylaws. So even if you didn't officially take that vote, I would still serve as town council until you voted to have someone else in there. So that's just a housekeeping matter, but I did want to give recognition to that section of the bylaws. And I'm not sure, I'm curious, we can ask Diane or I know Jackie's on whether the town council has been reappointed every year. I don't think that's happened. It's just been, and this has been probably going back 20 years with that type of ratification vote hasn't happened. So. All right, now, basically, under the, so basically the fixed fee portion of the retainer stays the same. It goes up a little from 85 to 90,000. One thing I want to emphasize on this is that if these fees are not incurred, it's not that the town pays the fees. It's only billed for the work it does under the regular town council service and labor services. And then once you hit $90,000, you get the next $10,000 discounted or written off. And so this has been the same process we've used under the existing agreement, and it has actually worked and yielded some good savings to the, to the town this year. The first year we started, there was only about 3,000 in savings, but this year in FY 2022, and this year as of today, the full $10,000 has been discounted. So I'd ask the board to consider, you know, when considering the hourly rate, for example, 80, about $80,000 has been billed year-to-date for town council services. And an additional $10,000 has been discounted already. So what that means is basically it's a 12% discount on what's been billed. So I just want to flag that as there is some real value in this fixed fee retained. This is work that's being performed. It shows up on the invoices, but it's written off, it's discounted. So I just wanted to emphasize that. And then all the other language stays the same. There, there is an adjustment in the rate from, my rate from 225 to 250 and the other attorneys from 195 to two and a quarter. So Jeff, you, what you said was slightly incorrect because everyone was going, proposed to go up to two and a quarter. On the fee, at, you know, the rate of inflation during the relevant time period and costs have increased about 17%. And this is about a 10% increase, which will also cover the next three years and would also have to, you know, incur or withstand inflationary pressures in that respect also. So that, that is the proposal on the fees. And then, you know, and keep in mind also that all the other attorneys who were doing most of the work, Heather, Mike, Terry and Arthur, all have collectively more than 20 years experience each. So they're experienced attorneys. And we are noting that if we have a junior attorney come in, it would be at 215 an hour, a little bit less. So there is, there is value in that 225 in terms of the experienced attorneys with some, can make a huge difference in terms of the time that's billed if they're experienced on the issues at hand. And then the paralegal rate is proposed to be billed at $100 an hour. We haven't really used very little to know paralegal, I don't think, in that respect. So that is pretty much it. Everything else that is shown in nod red line is identical to the last version. I think those are the main items here. Let me see if there's anything else. I think that's it. Just give me a moment. I think I got all the offices correct. I think I switched that to show that Steven's on the board and is the clerk. And Jeff stays as chair and Eric is the vice chair. Yep. So that, that's, that, those are the proposed changes I have and the reasoning in connection with that. So that's, that's what the proposal is. So.
So if I.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul. You could probably stop sharing though, Chris.
Oh, sure. Let me do that right now.
Go ahead, Paul.
So first, I'm, I'm very happy with Chris Petrini and the law firm. So I voted to renew, but when I voted to renew, I, I thought it was gonna be the same contract, which meant the same price. And unfortunately, I didn't realize there was gonna be a difference until a couple of hours ago. And then when I looked at it and I saw, you know, 195 to 225, I think you all know when it comes to contracts, I like to see things costed out. You know, how much is this gonna cost us to do a $30 an hour increase in rates? Which means if you take last year's number of hours and multiply it essentially by $30, what are we looking at? What, does this increase our costs by $10,000 or does it increase by, I don't know, 50,000? I'm just making those numbers up. But it would be nice to have economic analysis as to what this means for us, rather than just to, to vote it blind. And I was also thinking, if we're gonna go for a $30 increase, was there any negotiation about phasing that in, like $10 a year? So go up $10 this year, $10 the next year, $10 a year after that. So I, I sent inquiries about Jeff and to Jeremy about what, what the negotiating history was about the, the rate increase. Again, because I was kind of blindsided by the increase. So I think where I'm at is I'm, I'm happy with the firm and I'd just like to see what the cost, how it costs out. So I'd like to not act on it today, but to have the finance people tell me what is this gonna cost? Remembering that we've pretty much set our budgets already at town meeting. And if this is gonna guarantee that we're gonna be paying X dollars more, are those X dollars in the budget somewhere? And how do we?
Well, if the base fee though, Paul, if the base fee is $90,000, what are you saying? This is a 10, roughly a 10% increase in cost from 195 to 230. So that would be $9,000 on the base fee, you know, the retained portion of the fee. I'm not sure what the total fees are.
So that's not, that's not 9%, is it? $30 on 195?
About 15%.
Yeah, whatever.
I had it at 9.90. Like what I did, I just was listening to what Paul said, you know, we billed $80,000 this year on the retainer work. And there really hasn't been a lot of billings so far, thankfully on the non-retainer side. It's, it's pretty much the Lebarsky matter is the main case. That's really the, the main matter that is, has billing. So if you, if you take that $80,000 and you assume basically a blended, a current blended rate of about 2 or 215, which is probably what it is, because again, I was always billing at 225. The other attorneys were 195. I had it about $9,500 increase of that $80,000. So again, you know, the costs are going up. We are, we are putting the retainer discount and I'd be open to phasing in it as well. So, you know, to that particular discussion, I'm just trying to address what, what the market's doing, what the costs are. And so that was the proposal. So.
Do any other select board comment?
Yeah, I'm actually, I mean, I see attorney rates all the time in my day job. I think even the proposed rates aren't unreasonable, particularly with the services we get. It'll be interesting to hear other members of the board, but I'm fine with this contract that's in front of me.
Steven, do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, I think I agree with Eric. I think we're all aware of what the inflationary environment has been like over the past couple of years. And I do think that these rates look reasonable and I would be in favor of signing the contract as, as proposed.
Okay. I, I concur with them, Paul. So we could take a vote unless you feel strongly that you would like to know the exact numbers associated with the increase.
Oh, I. You know, in other contexts, I've asked for the same thing.
I heard you. So if you, if you would like to get the exact amount of the increase of those changes, we can have them calculate that and bring it to the, I think whenever our next meeting is, two weeks from now.
But that's, that would be my, my preference.
Okay, that's fine. We, we need to probably do it by, what is our next meeting, Diana? Cause we switched around.
Next week. I think it's next week, the 9th, I think, something like that.
The agenda is saying at June 29. I think the Select Board at their last meeting were, was unsure, but I thought they said they were gonna have a meeting on.
We can't meet on the 15th. Two weeks from tonight would be the 15th. There's both Marian and Paul are not available on the 15th.
Right. And the following, the following meeting after that would be June 29.
Yeah.
I just wanted to alert the board. I am away the 29th. I could do the 15th. But again, the current contract we have goes until August 1st anyway. So I'm gonna continue under the current contract anyway. So it has to be the first meeting in July. That, that's fine also. I just was trying to keep this moving along best we could. So.
No, no. And I think we may not need to be there. We could just vote. We'll see how Paul feels once he gets the final numbers. So it may not be necessary for you to be there. Or maybe, you know, if you wanted someone else from your firm to just be there to hear what we said, that's fine too. But.
If you, if you'd like, I, I just did a very quick kind of back of the envelope calculation.
Yeah.
Based on the actuals for FY 20, 21 and 22, and I averaged that out. It was, which came out to be 235, 235,000 in legal fees. Obviously, that wasn't all Petrini, but it gives us a general idea. And a 15% increase on that would be, and let me see here, about $35,000. So we're looking at an increase of probably somewhere between 10 and $35,000 in our legal fees. That is probably what we're looking at. So I guess, I don't know if, if that is enough information for you, Paul, or if you, do you want a, a very specific number based on the actual hours that have been charged by Petrini?
It's gonna be less than that, I think, by the way, because a fair amount that I think is special councils for Coolidge Street. I don't know if any of his libraries worked into that, but certain special councils in that. And plus, Petrinian Associates gives a discount above the retainer. And so I wouldn't factor in for that discount above, above the 90,000. So I'm gonna guess it's gonna be somewhere in order of 20-ish.
Do, do, do we have the funds to pay?
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Well, we all, we never budget. We always budget.
Right. We budget like $5 in.
We always under budget and then we supplement it, right? So.
We show and ice it as I like to say.
I feel like, don't you, don't you make that point every year, Paul?
Yeah, we're here for, get Mr. Wirtz to send the call you if you want.
It, it looks like you've budgeted $80,000 for the last several years for legal purposes, and that's what's been carried for FY 24.
So we never, we're never budgeting enough for what we're gonna.
I think for next year, we should probably increase the legal budget to 90 if that's the retainer, right? I think traditionally the 80 has been, we've essentially budgeted the retainer.
I think that's right.
So, you know, I think that the legal budget should follow the retainer. But, you know, realistically, I'd say that we're looking at certainly no more than $35,000 total increase. And like Eric said, but probably significantly less than that.
Right, because I just want to emphasize the, the rates that are being proposed increase are about 10%. And, you know, so I, it's, you know, 10% of 80,000 should be significantly less than, than $30,000. But I understand that the desire and plus you've got to take into account the retainer discount, but.
Like I said, the rates seem pretty reasonable. If I knew, if I remembered, I didn't remember that your staff was only 195, I would have called Heather a lot more often last year.
And Heather do stuff that wasn't due for two years, right?
Well, so what do you think, Paul? Someone made a motion to approve this contract. Do you think you'd be on board or what's your comfort level?
Well, I don't want to stand in the way. I mean, as I say, I like the, the firm and happy with the services and all of that. I, I I have the discomfort of not having, being sort of blindsided and not having known that there was gonna be these rate increases. So I'm, I'm playing catch up. You, you all may have had figured that out earlier and had gotten your heads around it, but I'm still still trying to work it through. So, but I don't want to stand in the way. It seems like this.
What if we, if it's $30 increase, what, how would it be if we increased it? Chris, you can see if you read it, increased it by 15 for the first year, because we have a step function from today. And at the end of the first year, increase it by another 15. So it would be 30 up, it would be 30 rate for two years of the contract. In other words, it would be the first year of the contract would be, whatever that is, 210. And then the years two and three of the contract would be at 230.
That's fine. I mean, these aren't, these aren't big dollars we're talking about. So if that would make, cut your face it in, I hear Paul's pointing on that, and that seems to be a reasonable approach.
Makes year and two and three at this full rate, but year one at 210. Whatever the actual numbers work out to be. We went from 195 to 225, I think. So $15 to 195 would be 210. How would that be, Paul?
Bye.
All right. So why, why, so I want to make that motion?
I'll move, I'll move that we approved the contract with, with the rate revisions just mentioned by the chair. Yeah, that's my motion.
And you, you have that, Diane? It will, the year one of the contract would be 215 for the three lawyer, the three senior lawyers.
Two and three will be 225, correct?
Correct. And then Chris, Chris's rate will be effective right, right away.
Okay.
All right. Cause he's the principal of the firm. All right. You're okay with that, Chris?
Yeah, that, that makes sense. What I'll do is I'll, I'll, what I'll do is I'll accept those changes. I'll make the further changes that we just discussed, and then I'll send you a clean version with all the other changes. And I'll just highlight in my cover memo the section that's changed that reflects this. I don't think we need to do another red line unless you both think there's a need to do so. I, I think we're in pretty good shape.
I think, I think we're okay here. Those, I see Alexis has our panda. Hang on a second, Alexis. Is there any other select word comment? I think we have a, Eric made a motion, but did anyone second it yet? I didn't hear a second. Okay. So before we vote, Alexis, did you have a comment on this?
Not on this.
Oh, are you gonna get ready for something else?
Yeah.
All right. So we have a, a motion and a second. So I'll vote, take a vote. Eric?
I.
Steven?
I.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Thank you, Chris.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. Be in touch.
All the principals, they're terrific.
Thank you. I enjoy working with you. Have a good evening.
All right.
Bye-bye.
Sounds good. So now, do you want to talk, Alexis?
I just wanted to see, is it possible to still have public comment? I'm sorry I was late to the game and sort of on the fly.
Of course.
And I'm not even, I'm not even sure how to propose this. I believe the town administrator might have been spoken to about this already. But I think I need to come before the Select Board. I'd like to request permission to wrap a tree at the fork of 16 and 27 where we hang banners to promote town events. I was granted money by the Mass Cultural Council of Sherborne to wrap trees in support of Pride Month in June for the LGBTQ plus community. And we have gotten permission from private areas of town, but it would be nice to see if we could wrap one of the trees at town center. And I don't know who to go to to ask that.
One question I would ask to start with is, is it safe for the tree? Like, do you have to worry about like having to be permeable wrapping or is there specific wrapping for this?
It's only for a month and it's ribbon that, that's breathability between the layers. That is a good question. We remove the staples and we use sort of one staple per ribbon, trying to reduce the impact. These are dead trees, but on the live trees.
Oh, yeah. The two dead trees are the ones, yeah. I think they're gonna cut them down before too long, but Sean can tell us that.
Yeah, they'll, they'll probably be up for the next month. So. Yeah, they'll probably be up for the next month. So this request Jeff came in today. I was gonna mention it during town administrator updates. It's great that Alexis was able to speak.
Absolutely. I think it sounds cool.
Awesome. It was it was well received last year when we did it on two trees in town and I applied for the grant and I hope to have this be sort of a multi-town event in the future. So this is the start of hopefully something positive and larger.
So if I could.
Yes, go ahead, Paul.
First, that's not on the agenda today, but secondly, as a lawyer.
Is a public comment.
Yes, so that doesn't mean that means you hear it and you put it on an agenda.
Right.
But speaking as a lawyer, there are all kinds of cases that say that once you allow speech at a particular location, you have to allow it for everybody. Which means if you go down this path, if somebody wants to put a Confederate flag up, we can't say no. We can't make a judgment about the content of the speech. And there was a case for the city of Boston where they put a flag up for some groups. And then I think it was a Catholic church wanted to put a flag up. And Boston said, no, and the Supreme Court said, you can't do that. You have to treat everybody equally. So before you open the town up to that kind of exposure, first want to have this put over to a regular agenda item. And secondly, it should be vetted by council and have council tell us what the implications are of allowing public property to be used for this kind of speech. That's all I'm saying. Just a cautionary from a legal perspective, cautionary note.
Now, you've made that point before. I know it's based on experience, so I'm glad you did.
Don't we already? I'm sorry.
Hang things that just say a date, like we'll say that the Boy Scout resale is next week or that soccer club registration opens next week. They're all
informational.
Informational, not. But you could argue, Paul, that there, you know, now you're supporting soccer clubs or I don't know.
I'm I'm fine to add this as an agenda item next week if that's helpful.
We're not meeting till the twenty ninth of June, I think.
Okay.
So it's not because we just met last Thursday, and so we usually meet every two weeks, but people aren't available two weeks from tonight. So I don't know. Is it timed? Is there an event that you're timing this around?
At the month of June.
June.
Pride Month.
Yeah.
If it feels like this is something that could have ramifications that are negative for the town, we can address it next year and and make a bigger conversation of it then. I'm fine with that, however you think is best.
I think that probably makes sense. I I understand. I mean, we certainly certainly a cause that I personally would support, but Paul does make a good point that we have to be careful about if it all of a sudden gets, you know, a little bit contentious with strange groups wanting, you know, that we can't judge and turn them away. So.
Yes, and and I did, and I now probably should should say this and figure out what to do. I did ask permission to do this on Pine Hill Lane from Pine Hill as they have a gay straight alliance club that well, it's not called that. It's called Pine Hill Pride Alliance. And they were participants in it today, and I'm thinking maybe we should have come to the town for that. I don't know who has jurisdiction over that property, if it's the town or Pine Hill School.
Paul would know that. I think it's the school, isn't it?
If it's the school building, it's under the control of school committee. If it's a public, if it's the road.
Yes, it's a tree at the bottom where Jameson Field is.
Yeah, that's that's town.
Okay. So maybe we need to move the location up to the school to get their permission, since this seems to be something we need to discuss further.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to pass a headache on to a sister organization, but I'm just very wary about.
No, I think.
All the case law out there. It's it's what I do for a living is defend municipalities. And this issue has come up so many times so that I now consistently take the position with all municipalities to stay away from signs of any kind other than these what I call governmental speech announcement of events. This is going to be a library fair. There's going to be a town election, you know, things like that. But once you get into you know, flying the, you know, the the flag of Ukraine, then you have to fly the flag of Russia if they want to fly it, or the flag of China. It's where you want to go. So we may all support this cause, and this is a good cause. But is this opening a door to a lot of legal fees? We're just talking about legal fees. This these cases, one case to Supreme Court, you're talking about a quarter of a million or more and just legal fees on one case.
So how about I move I move that that rap of a tree to the Pine Hill campus and then.
Yeah, but then it's a school committee headache, but that's fine. That's they have their lawyers and they have their budget, so.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. And I will I will I will come back in due time next May.
All right. Thanks, Alexis.
Thank you very much. I appreciate.
Good luck with the though.
Thank you.
All right. So moving along, we've got Dorothea. She's going to update us on the action plan.
Exactly. Thanks, Jeff. I'm going to share my screen. Hopefully I can manage.
Sure.
Um, yes, I have it here. Let me see, share. So I'm going on with the first slide here. And I think presentation mode, right?
Yeah, that's easier. It's a little bit larger if you can do that.
Exactly. So that switches now to presentation mode. Going ten minutes and I'm going to time myself.
Okay.
Oh, you have a full agenda and I want to keep this to the essential because you guys won't soon have or you all of you will have soon the possibility to view the draft plan. And you will delve into the plan. I will give you today an overview of the findings or the results of that climate and resilience plan we started eight months ago. So we are now have arrived at this purple bar, which is the last phase of the plan. And the we have done we have gone through two community wide survey and three input sessions from the Climate Resilience Working Group. So the working group members of thirteen in total volunteered the expertise for weighing and prioritizing these actions that I will introduce tonight. Our consultant, Carrie Hewitt, merged all of these comments from CRWG and also from the Energy and Sustainability Committee into this draft that you will be able to review now between June first and eighteenth. After that, public comments will be merged, integrated in this plan, and you will have a final plan on June thirtieth. One of the biggest undertakings of in my agenda. So I'm moving you quickly and as a reminder, because I'm still getting the question, what is this going to? What is this plan going to help us with? This climate and resilience plan is funded by the state's municipal vulnerability and preparedness program. And the purview of that program is to support communities in preparing for climate change impacts and at the same time support these communities in the reduction of climate, excuse me, of greenhouse gases in the alignment with the climate bill that was released or passed in the House in twenty twenty one. So what does that mean? That was the task where I have this graph up to just illustrate the enormity of of what is ahead of us. The thirty eight thousand megatons of CO2 equivalent need to be reduced to fifty percent by twenty thirty and to net zero by twenty fifty. So that's fastly approaching, especially twenty thirty is just seven years or actually six years from now. And our task is at the cost to take back the cause of these emissions. So where are the emissions coming from? I've presented this to the board. I want to say one and a half years ago. Our residents are the main emitters. And eighty six percent of all the emissions are coming from residents' homes and cars. And the task will be to reduce this footprint by switching to electric vehicles, by replacing oil and gas heating with renewable renewable clean energy, heating and cooling systems and solar panels. We do have a rising number of residents that are doing that, and that's the good news. They have electrified their homes and made money with it, has a lot of savings to be done. And this draft plan actually features these success stories with data and dollar stake. So the overall acceptance of climate change was communicated in those two community surveys. The first survey was to gauge priorities and concerns among residents in regards to focus areas. Focus areas you see on the left. In the center, we have or in the majority or the main concern was the quality, health and sufficiency of surface and groundwater. Sixty two percent of respondents named that as the highest concern. And the second biggest concern was perceived in the degradation of natural resources, speaking the tree canopy, the open space, et cetera, at twenty three percent, followed by public health and disease, ten percent. So after that, now you can see here a couple of comments from respondents' personal accounts, basically, that were supplied in the survey, and they speak of the kind of effects of climate change or the kind of effects that climate change has had on their work on their natural environment and on their property. So while you're reading this, I'm talking about the second survey, which was a little bit more of a work where residents had to rank suggested actions to tackle these problems. And they were also asked to give input on strategy approaches, how to do this best, and to point or to rank the barriers that they they that they see will hinder or will be in the way when it comes to the implementations of these actions.
So that's a quick question. Do you mind, Dorothea? Or you want questions at the end?
Questions, I think. Me, because I wanted to keep myself at ten minutes and.
Well, the only thing I was is a very quick one. I, you know, your prior slide showed people being concerned about water shortages, and yet this purple thing says the flooding. I think it might be better to show that as water issues or something, because there's also if you live in California, you've got all kinds of flooding and coastal areas, including Boston, could be affected by higher sea levels. So the water surpluses and shortages maybe should be an issue because your next slide shows someone concerned about flooding that haven't had in twenty years that right here on the top center.
Oh, so true, Jeff. Climate change doesn't necessarily mean we only have to deal with drought. It.
Right, exactly. Yeah.
In times that you know, in in higher quantities in a shorter period of time, which means flooding.
Exactly.
It's missing at the times when we consistently were getting rain in in former times. There are two problems, the four hazards, and I want to jump really back to the top hazards here. A flooding and precipitation, storm events and wind, drought and extreme temperatures. What I think people perceive right now, especially through the last summer, is the shortage because we had a prolonged drought and people really responded to that in in many ways. So it is fresh on people's mind. Still, the flooding is something that is also an issue that we need to address.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. So I will, once, you know, we're seeing these personal accounts and and based on that, we were moving into basically four or five categories of let's say, elements. And our actions are sorted in in these kind of umbrella elements or categories, I want to call them. And for the for the rest of the presentation, I'd like you to walk you very quickly through this so that you get a better understanding what raised through the top, through the surveys CRD, CRWG for prioritization. So then the buildings and infrastructure category. We, the action number one is surprising, not surprisingly, asking for more education support for homeowners to technical support in moving to a clean and renewable energy system so that people can save money and strategically electrify their homes. We so far, we have done pretty much of a progress here. We have a hundred forty solar systems built to date, which is a ten percent adoption rate, more or less, fifty air source heat pumps, five geothermal systems. But for the future, we need to move with a faster adoption rate, and I think regionally, this can be done more effectively, and we are looking into this. Another infrastructure, this those two actions raised to the top are bold folded. So the other action that raised to the top was conducting a feasibility study to identify options for getting costs for improving our town's water supply. I don't want to delve on this because people have very strong views on on in general about the urgency of this action. But I want to say that the CRWG meeting concluded on the note that we need to have a fresh look on this topic that has been discussed to in many, many ways with no result. And people were hoping for a feasibility study in that area. And I want to leave it at that because I think it will lead us nervous question. People can supply their comments to that. I move you quickly to the next and asking myself why this is not. Hold on, I have to. Yes, sorry. So I'm moving you to the next category, which is natural resources and agriculture. In that area, we have or the people, actually, survey takers have found that the support of sustainable and regenerative farming practices are really important, given that the farming community is dependent on a continuous water supply and soil health, soil health. So it's something that can be addressed with the agricultural permission most likely. And then another thing that we knew before we actually started the plan was the trees. The trees are posing a risk. The climate is is stressor for the trees in the last couple of years. The community experienced dead trees falling on power lines and interrupting power, especially prolonged power outages during a heat wave are risky, if you see with homeowners without water and cooling. So tree management guidelines for private properties are included in this plan. And we will most likely have in the future, maybe we can go farther into a further into a tree bylaw. So I'm moving to transportation mobility. Not surprisingly, the action of encouraging to adopt the electric vehicle and. And hybrids has been recognized as the one of the most important uh and effective ways to bring down fossil fuel emissions. We have started the process of transitioning town vehicles to these with the police Mustang Mach-E, I think um coming next year. And from the survey respondents, we learned that twenty five percent of them actually are really considering buying an EV. Which tells me that a continuous education campaign um and an EV show will be will be probably moving people quicker to uh adopt that. In the same way, we need and should assist the providing for uh shuttle services to nearby transit. And to town services. The walkability is something that stays a hot topic. Um and it comes um when it comes to the older residents in this town, which means we need to continue. Um let's swing forward um basically being less power dependent. I'm moving you quickly um to the second last uh category, which is called sustainable resource consumption. There's something that is, I think, something that we will really need to address, which is uh the concerning water usage during droughts. Um a more stringent water restrictions, like other towns do that, to uh MRW water. Um notifications, how to manage that. It falls into our lap now. To really look at this in a fair manner and help Sherburneites to manage. Their this finite resource in a fair manner. And um we can certainly look at different ways how how other towns have dealt with this, that are not connected to public water. So um. I will be moving you, given the time, to um to the next category. Um I just wanna mention, very good news. Uh we have started an awareness campaign uh around um water conservation, like sustainable landscaping practices. Through our Pollinator Pathway Initiative. Uh we started that on the Arts and Crater with really, really good response. Twenty five properties basically pledging to do pesticide pesticide free uh lawn management. And being open to reducing lawn area. And this initiative is supported by the two uh existing garden clubs in town and the Groundwater Protection Committee. Um a group of of really knowledgeable people that can help move residents. From the decorative value um kind of approach of yards. To a service focused approach that is needed to to conserve water. Finally, um we're looking at community well-being preparedness. And in that category, um especially from the parent community at Pine Hill. Um we learned that the summer, uh that the number of heat outs has meanwhile outnumbered snow days. Um needless to say, that parents strongly feel that the school facilities um need to upgrade. To provide renewable, energy efficient cooling during uh extreme heat events. Which will be, as projected, become um stronger or more severe and more frequent. So until we have a new school building, we have to wrap our minds and revisit this um. In in the next uh hopefully in the eh eh not too soon future, like. In the same way, uh and this is the last action I'm discussing here. Uh we um came up that uh they need to update the town's emergency response plan. And it has been seen as a uh priority by people on this um. This year's um cold snap in early February. Brought people to town hall because they lost heat during due to the power outage. And um it just is a harbinger of what can uh be up for us uh in the future. If we we really need to strengthen the communication. Uh between town and these residents, so that we can make uh provide safety and uh effective services. I'm now concluding, and um I wanna um pointing to the public comment period, June one through eighteen. Please spread the word. The entire draft plan is now up on the town website. It has also been shared through the Sustainable Sherborne Newsletter. Uh there is a link, a Google form that people can click on um and provide comments to each section of this plan. Um I wanna thank you, all of the people that have helped to make this plan a reality. It has been a very, very big um undertaking. And it would have not been possible without dedicated people that wanna make this a better uh community. And I wanna thank you. Um I wanna extend a heartfelt thank you to all of these people. It has been a great experience so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for uh reaping it on us and uh I'm glad the plans coming together. You could probably um unshare now. Let's see if there's any additional comments or people that wanna.
Oh, comment.
Go ahead, Paul.
So first, I wanna thank you for putting this together. Um I agree with. The. Survey that you did that indicated that most people felt. An urgency to address issues and I share that sense of urgency. So I'm I'm delighted that you're working on it and coming up with all these ideas. In in the past, there have been two um. Two restrictions on things that we. Were trying to do. And so I'm not sure how that those restrictions will fit into. The plan. The two restrictions are that people in Sherburne are are very possessive about their property. And don't take well to um being told what to do about their property. So I remember a discussion maybe a year or two ago about. Our adopting. The water control. At water control um bylaw for drought conditions for wells. And the sense was, well, it's not public water. It's all private, blah, blah, blah. Uh I'm just not sure. That there would be the support necessary, the political support necessary. To regulate private property. And the same thing with regulating trees on private property. There's a there's a lot of issues with that, just from the voice of experience, having. Tried different ideas in the past. The other restriction is money. And so when we talk about. Doing all these things, some of them include hiring people. And you know, improve various physical assets. All that is gonna cost money. And are there grants that are gonna cover those costs? Or are these gonna be uh taxpayer? Asks for which we have to go to town meeting and then get these uh debt exclusions. I'm just flagging these issues because we've been there, done that. And one little horse story I have is that some years ago, I I pushed very strongly to have a sidewalk, some sidewalks in town. And one of the sidewalks I wanted to to build was along Maple Street that would connect the president fields with the town offices. And we had some funds from from an outside source. But when we had a meeting, had all those people. And. Essentially, it was, why do a sidewalk there when we don't have a sidewalk in our neighborhood? Do ours first and then do that. And everybody was fighting over where sidewalk should be. And then how much money was it really gonna cost? Are we gonna do uh uh something cheap that's gonna be a couple of feet wide? Are we gonna be all ADA compliant and it's gonna be four feet wide? And do we have to do land takings? This. Went right down a rabbit hole and we we couldn't get a consensus at the board level to do anything. And so. The sidewalk building program that we had envisioned some years ago never went to fruition. But a lot of your recommendations depend on on sidewalks. I mean, organized community walks to promote health and social interaction. But if you're walking on a narrow street with cars going by you at forty miles an hour, is that promoting health? And the same thing, this all these things are sort of related, and that's why I'm speaking about these two. Practicalities, money and.
Mm hmm.
And uh private property rights.
Yeah.
So my fundamental question is, i- is there money that's gonna pay for these things? Or is this with grants and stuff like that? Or is this a taxpayer ask?
Well, that's a very good question. And um what I can tell you from my experience with like these grants is like. Uh some of it uh will, some of these grants, like um, for example, uh Gina applied for tree management uh guidelines. Like a technical assistance grant through MAPC. Unfortunately, it didn't go through. But if it went through, we would have had somebody who could put together like a guideline. Um that would work for us uh as a town, of course. You know, of course, there are grants, and I'm expecting more money to come online as, you know, climate change takes hold. Like we we notice the effect being stronger. And there I see consistently more grants to address climate change. And I that's my task, to look out for the money that uh we could possibly apply for. Um regional regional collaboration uh is a big, big factor when we apply for grants. Because we are such a small community, nobody is gonna pay attention to us when we have larger towns that are in much worse shape. Um I I will be working on that and and run this by. And I think the way how we can approach all of these, um let's say, actions that people support. Uh we will have a group that consistently is vetting how we can move these things forward. And how they are seen and um evaluated by the community. Let's look at this as a menu of things that we should achieve. And predominantly, I think we should focus on reducing uh on on the low hanging fruit. Which is helping homeowners to move quickly to electrify their homes and to switch out the car. And that's where I focus mainly on, because that's what, you know, what our task is here, to reducing the emissions. And at the same time, while grants will come along for the mitigation, um uh excuse me, for the resilience. Uh the impacts that we feel like the floods and um the heat waves. We will have to consistently, you know, look for that money. And um if we get some, we will move on that with that pace. That's how I see it.
Okay, I think that's good. Thank you, Dorothea. I think it'll probably be a combination, Paul, just as an example. The new library has twenty two air source heat pumps in it, and that was in the construction budget, but it was, you know, planned all along to have that. And the library will also be LEED certified after year one, I believe. So there's costs will be embedded. You know, we probably got some grants for the new electric vehicles for buying, but we're paying for a new vehicle. Maybe it's somewhat of a premium, but we're getting some rebates, I believe. So it'll be a blend of grants and town investments. I I was gonna actually add a third leg to Paul's, uh make it a triangle, our very next gen item appointments to boards and committees. So the a third uh challenge will be finding people to volunteer to do all these things also, because we already. Have a hard time filling boards and committees. And so that's always gonna be a challenge in addition, in addition to money and property rights.
Right.
Are there any other uh select board comments or?
I just had one question. You said the public comment period is June one to June eighteen. What is the what's the method by which the public should get their comments uh to you?
Um Stephen, the um on the town website, um you'll have the actual draft plan. So click on it and a PDF opens. And then there's a Google form where you could literally, for each section of the plan, go in. Um name the page and the section you'd like to comment on, and that's how you work yourself through the document. And then you submit that through the Google form.
Great, thank you.
Then merge that.
All right. We'll look forward to seeing the results of that. And I was just gonna add one other point is you'll see on item six, we're discussing select board goals. So I'm sure that Jeremy and I, if we're thinking on the same wavelength, will be thinking that will be one of our goals, to have some sustainability uh efforts. All right. Thanks again for the update, Dorothea.
Thank you.
And thank Gina. I don't think Gina was here, but thank him as well.
Fortunately, not here.
And um we're gonna move on to Diane and the uh appointments to various boards and committees. Do you have a a list you wanna share, Diane? Or how do you wanna handle it?
Um I don't, I don't have it on my computer to share. Do you? Are you able to share the list?
I'm I might. Why don't you keep uh going and I'll look for it.
Okay, so I just wanted to say that uh this year we have twenty three reappointments in front of the select board. And we have two new appointments, uh one of which is Nicole Weemeyer. Um who is asking to be considered to be appointed to the Open Space Committee. And Adrian Frankel, uh she's requesting permission to be appointed to the Groundwater Protection Committee. And I have more uh appointments that will be coming forward that I'll bring forward to the select board at the June twenty ninth meeting. They are slowly coming in now uh in little dribs and drabs, but I have a few other new residents that are considering appointments to other various committees. So I'm working with them also. So I hope to be able to bring the rest of them forward on June twenty nine. Now Sue Keller, her um is at the meeting tonight, and I just wanna say thank you to her. She has a constant contact subscriber email blast that she sends out. She has five hundred people on that on that email blast. And um we picked up a couple of new interested residents because of that. So I just wanna say thank you to Sue for doing that for the town. And she's also put in this month's Sherburne link, um a list of all the vacancies we have. And a tear off sheet with the application so that they can tear it off, fill it out, drop it in the outside mailbox if they want, or scan it and email it to me. So we're working diligently to get some nu- new uh volunteers in town. So I'm just asking the select board if they will consider voting on the list that was presented to them for tonight.
Can you see my screen?
Yep. Thank you, Jeff.
Sure.
So I'd like to make that motion, but I'd also like to make a comment that I I I didn't see any. Quote contested, close quote, uh races here. That between the reappointments and the new members, I didn't see any contest. And with no contests, it's 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 a no brainer to to reappoint people and to. Express our appreciation for their services to the town.
Absolutely.
That's that's my motion to to uh. Reappoint all these people or appoint the two new. And appoint the two new. As listed in the chart that's being displayed.
Thank you.
You've met you've met Nicole's son. He was an Eagle Scout, or in Weemeyer is an Eagle Scout. Okay, I stopped sharing now, can I?
Yeah.
I think the issue too is, you know, we have. Lots of vacancies even beyond these, and it's hard to recruit people. So this is a good job to get people. You know, to to fill the slots, but it's always a challenge, I think.
It is a challenge, but we're working. We're we're making some. I can see that we're starting to make some headway. I've been getting more phone calls and more emails and inquiries about certain. Boards and committees that I've been forwarding over to the board chairs to have discussions with them. So I'm hopeful that we're gonna be bringing on some new members.
Yes, and the COA newsletters and other vehicles have gotten the word out.
That was.
Diane, have you ever have you ever tried approaching um like the school committee um or the schools themselves to see if. Any similar list could get published in a school related newsletter?
I haven't, but that's a wonderful idea, Stephen. I'm gonna take you up on that one. I'm gonna do that next week.
Cause I got I got a lot of mailings from the. Cause I got, I got a lot of mailings from the schools.
You know what, it would be.
If you wanna, if you wanna hit all the, 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 the parents with school-aged kids, that's the way to do it.
That's a good idea, I can give them the list and maybe the application in one of their newsletters. Thank you for that.
Diane, is there any particular board or committee that is, is sort of the most lacking in volunteers?
Well, to be honest with you, we, I am desperate to find someone to be on the Leland Farms Board of Trustees, we don't have a representative on that board. And the Tax Aid Committee desperately needs another member. Outside of that, we do have a few vacancies here, and the Personnel Board could use a couple more, they can have up to five members. We currently only have three. So it'd be nice if we could get a couple of more members on that board, um. But outside of that, I would say off the top of my head, that would probably be the most I can think of, Jeremy. But the, the Leland Farms Board of Trustees is a concern of mine, because we don't have any representation from the select board for the.
There's supposed to be one select board rep.
Yes, right.
Pointed, appointed by, not from the select board, but appointed by the select board.
Appointed by the select board, that would be a representation for this, the town side. For the market, for the um affordable units that are there. So if anybody knows of anybody, I would, you know, please have them reach out to me. My email address is everywhere, and I'd be more than happy to send an application out.
All right.
Thank you.
Sean's uh.
I saw that.
Sean, Sean wants some headhunter fees here, it looks like.
Right, Frank's already shaking his head.
I'll give you a call, I'll give you a call, Frank, tomorrow.
All right, thanks. So we're gonna move to item four, which is the implementation of the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit.
Wait, wait a second.
Do we need to actually vote on that?
Oh, I guess you're right, we need to vote on the uh appointments as listed, so you wanna make the motion, Paul?
I did already.
Oh, I didn't.
I need a second.
Attention.
I'll second.
Second, all right, Eric.
Hi.
Stephen.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
And I am I as well.
Thank you very much.
I got word that um, I, I mean, Marion had something come up, so she won't be joining us tonight.
Well, then let's appoint her to the Leland Farms.
Yeah, yeah, so let's do that. So let's uh, let's now go to the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit, I don't know if um. Sean or Chief Galvin, I'm not sure who all wants to.
Both are with us tonight, Jeff.
I see him, yep.
We thought tonight, there were some questions on the enforceability.
Yeah, I know.
We thought we would invite Chief Galvin to, to help um kind of talk us through the enforceability.
Yeah.
Of, of this implementation. And at a later date, follow up with some more specific recommendations, so. Um, you know, with that, I think, you know, could Tom, um. Chief, could you give us a little bit of a background as far as your take on the enforceability of these?
Yeah, absolutely, I've done, I've done some more digging over the last few days as well. So um, the question, it, it was raised, is there some language in the statute that talks about observing the vehicles uh for a certain uh. Distance um in order for enforceability. Um, so there's. Initially, my, my thought on this is it's, it's enforceable um because of the way our officers are trained. Um, but it's, it's even deeper than that, there's actually a nineteen seventy-nine uh appeals court decision, Commonwealth versus Why Not? And that, that was the, one of the arguments in the case. And uh, the, actually, the, the appeals court ruled that the, the. Uh, what needs to be proved uh by the Commonwealth or by the, the community would be that a vehicle uh was operating at speed, speed greater than reasonable and proper. That the, those uh. Other items that are listed in a statute um are not required to be proven. Um, they're not one of the elements that, that need to be proven in order for this to be enforceable. Um, you know, and even in addition to that, um, you know, if, if we. If we did find out if there was a later court decision that comes out or something else, it, it would still be enforceable as a speed greater than reasonable violation. Um, it would just change potentially the fine amounts. Um, because if we were to write something, uh, write a ticket and simply write the ticket without listing a speed on it, that it was a speed greater than reasonable. Say somebody went through a posted speed zone that's already posted at forty, and they were actually doing forty, but there was six inches of snow on the ground. We could write it as a ninety seventeen violation, speed greater than reasonable, a fifty dollar fine. Um, so it will be enforceable, um, a- as of now with current court rulings, um, that, you know, the uh. Those distance requirements in it aren't, aren't required proof um for court purposes, and uh, I don't think we should run into any issues.
So I have one comment on that, if I could.
Uh, go ahead, Paul.
So uh, uh, beyond enforcement, I think having signs that say that the speed limit is a certain. Amount. Will generate some voluntary compliance. I know I drive. From my house to like the town hall. At under forty miles an hour on South Main Street, even though there are cars behind me and they wanna go faster. Uh, so there are odd ducks like me who actually, when they see a sign. Actually believe it. And. And try to adhere to it. So posting the signs, whether or not they're enforceable. It is, is a good idea, and, and we should do it. And I'm not, I'm not sure that we have all the, the police and capability to enforce every. Uh, speed limitation in the entire town constantly. I mean, there should be other things that the police are working on, other than trying to enforce. Speed limits in the town. So. This is a long way of saying, I think we should adopt these, these uh. New speed limits. And. It will have a beneficial effect.
So um, before Sean wants to present, but Eric, did you wanna, cause you had concerns about if it was uh. If we could better enforce thirty mile an hours instead of twenty-five, would it be ultimately a lower sort of resulting speed? Observed?
Yeah, I mean, cause it's, it's almost impossible to get a true speed regulation nowadays, these townwide ones are all over the place. I definitely support them for basically the unposted roads, which is like every subdivision in town. I guess the um increase the distance between homes from uh one hundred fifty to two hundred feet, we consider thickly settled, cause at one fifty is almost nothing there in town. At two hundred covers some of the town. With nothing, not all of it. Um. What is it? You know what? I guess with that, with that case law decided by the chief, I'm actually good at passing this, I still have some reservations to get some of Savvy in there. Either get it knocked down to the reduced speed or something, all to gain five miles an hour, I still have some reservations, but hey. The chief, the chief looked it up and said, there's a case law, I'll be willing to support this.
All right, uh, Sean, do you wanna? Give us your thoughts?
Yeah, I had a couple thoughts, one. Um, and just to point out, keeping in mind that I. I'm staunchly against putting signs all over town. Um. Because I, you know, the. In the past, we had what would, what many people would call a sign litter. You know, non-regulatory speed limit signs all over town. Uh, no littering on every corner and the, and other things, but the, in downtown, I think. Anyone can attest to the fact that those, the delighted signs that we have now that tell you, you're either being naughty or nice. Uh, every time I pull out of Butler Street, it tells me I'm being nice, cause it's right there next to me and I'm only going about nine miles an hour. Um, but those are effective, and I think those are probably the second most effective thing to a police officer. We all, we know we can't just park a police officer downtown at the fire station all day, every day. But for, for very little money, we can have a solar-powered radar. That's gonna remind people how fast they're going when they go through either, either by the front door or town hall, or as they cross. In front of C and O Frosties or in, or anywhere else. I think it's, it's very effective, this isn't about just writing tickets everywhere in downtown. Sorry, the radio's going off. Uh, this is about just getting people to realize they're going too fast through downtown. Either as they, as they cross through where we hope to have a roundabout. Or as they, you know, they pass through the, pass the ball fields and the tennis courts and everything else, no one should be going thirty-five miles an hour through downtown. And, and whether it's enforceable, a hundred percent of the time, I'm not sure, that's the chief's. Purview, but I know we can put signage up and just remind people they're going a little bit too fast through downtown.
So I'd be happy to make a motion if I knew the dimensions, so if you tell me where you want these zones, I'll make a motion to approve them.
But my proposal before was uh just prior to fifty-nine North Main Street. Just prior to Lake and Elliot. On Elliot, so these are coming inbound. Uh, just prior to Saint Teresa's Church. And just prior to Town Hall on Washington Street. If you wanted to do it that way, and then myself and the chief, both chiefs and the. Town administrator can work out the exact coordinates, cause we'd need to give those to Mastaut, but.
So that would be a twenty-five mile per hour zone?
Yeah, that, basically that acts through town would be. Would be the, the zone, and, and it's two things, one, we're dictating, we're, we're, you're basically giving myself and. And um, the town administrator. The authority to go ask Mastaut to lift the thirty mile an hours uh regulatory limit. That's the, the first thing we need to do is go ask the Mastaut engineer to lift it. Because most of that, other than Elliot Street, most of that zone is thirty miles an hour. Uh. So we need to ask them to release that, and they, in all likelihood, they will, but we need permission to ask.
I don't think you can do Lake and Elliot, cause that doesn't have two hundred foot spacing between the homes. For the distance needed, what's it, needs it for a certain distance.
Well, but you absolutely have, you have both school zones.
Yeah, but the, this bylaw only is for on thickly settled. Like, I don't think.
That's also safety zones, that's also safety zones.
Okay. So you can put a permanent school, we already have a school zone there. So what does this do, is this, cause we have a school zone because of the new road, the new road uh automatically made a school zone in that area. At twenty.
Right. But that's under certain hours. Um. No, Elliot Street does have houses within two hundred feet all the way through.
I doubt it meets the distance, I can't remember, is it quarter mile or half mile, you have to do it. That's be a minimum two hundred feet for, for a consistent distance.
Right, and you. You definitely.
I just think we play with fire here a little bit, but, but I think we're pushing the envelope, if anyone ever push this, but I guess whatever. Certainly downtown has it.
If it would be more comfortable for the board, we could put together a graphic and come back to, to one of your next meetings, give you more specifics on the proposal.
Well, it sounds like it's actually not to implement it, but rather to ask the state to withdraw their. Speed limit. And once they withdraw it, then we can implement it, is that what, isn't what Sean just said?
Well, somewhat, but we will have to tell the state. Um, the exact coordinates of where we wanna lift it. Right, they're not gonna, they're not just gonna release the speed limit all the way to South Natick on, on Elliot. We're gonna tell them exactly. Where that is. Um. And we, and we can certainly do it just shy of, the problem is the Lake Street Elliot Street intersection. Is the second most dangerous intersection in town, so to. We're kind of dancing where, do we do it right after the intersection or right before the intersection, we're not sure. Uh. It, it fits within, once you pass the intersection, the houses are well within two hundred feet of each other, cause there's. There's three houses and there's Butler Street, then there's several other houses on the other side. Uh. So it, it fits. It's, it's where everyone feels comfortable with it, and we, we certainly can bring it back. Uh. Or we could, we, we could ask to start it at the intersection and see what Mastaut says.
But rather ask more than less.
Well, let me ask a funny question, is, is there already a map for the thirty? Is it the same map, in other words, what, you're gonna ask them to rescind the thirty, because the state road, I think, is the reasoning. So they must have an identified map that constitutes the, the street. Distances that are at the thirty mile an hour limit, are we just gonna make that same map be twenty-five?
No, it won't, no. No, because the, the extent of the thirty go much further.
Okay.
And we, and we're not gonna ask them to go all the way to, you, you don't wanna go beyond, just like on North Main Street. It'd be nice to go all the way to Douces Corner.
Yeah.
But it's also maybe unreasonable to think that everyone's gonna go twenty-five from Douces, you know, from Lake Street all the way to Butler Street.
Yeah.
So it, it's not, it doesn't actually match up with where the regulatory limits were last time someone did a speed study.
Yeah.
What we wanna do is, is choose, and, and why would we not choose the Lake and Elliot? Um, intersection to start it. Because as soon as you cross through Lake and Elliot, you're at the school zone.
Yeah, yeah.
You're, you're either at the, at the school exit. Um. And it, and it becomes twenty during school hours or, or not, but. You're, you're heading into that.
But guess where I'm going with this, are we, are, if I, reading what you're saying, right, then we might have new thirty mile hour. Speed limit signs that are further out from town than they are currently. And then have to add twenty-five mile hour ones in your zone, in other words, if, if we're keeping part of it as thirty, we have to mark that as thirty-two, don't we? Or the state does.
It's, it's marked as thirty if you come in from Natick.
Okay.
And what we'll do is break it.
Okay, all right.
At some point, both on, on, on Route sixteen in both directions.
Yep.
And on twenty-seven in both directions.
But some of the thirties will remain, some of the thirty mile an hours will re- remain in, in the ones beyond that. So.
Yes.
So could I make a suggestion, it, it sounds like with some uncertainty about where it begins and where it ends, and Jeremy had offered to. Put together a graphic, and I wonder. Shouldn't we put this off and have? All of that uncertainty. Resolve between Jeremy and Sean and. And Eric, if he's willing to get involved and so on. Uh. And come with a definite. Thing that, that I can, or somebody can move to adopt, cause right now it's. Not clear to me what we're adopting. So it seems a little fuzzy.
Having the, the zone highlighted on a map would be, would be pretty useful.
Okay.
Easy but useful, we'll, let's do that in July, not in June.
That's satisfying.
Twenty-nine.
That's fine, so that's fine, but, but maybe you're, we can, do we need to vote to authorize them to petition the state? You wanna make that motion, Paul, to, to change the thirties?
I would, uh, before we pull an actual regulated sign, I'd like to see the graphic, I'm still worried about. I don't.
Yeah, do it all at once.
All right, okay.
I don't wanna pull, cause it's hard to get a regulated thing, that's my, that's my whole reservation with this whole thing to get a regular.
Okay.
We just put the thirty back, that'd be cool, but yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, yeah, after Sean's rested from vacation, we'll come back in July.
I've heard violent agreement, as I always say. Thank you very much, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Jeremy, it's your show now, um. You can do them in either order or maybe blend them together, but we have a. We've talked about this, everyone, we had goals that we set up about two years ago and. Have met most of them, but I, when, when Jeremy started, I, one of the things I, and Diane wanted to see is org charts that. Help us really understand the organization, cause it's not just to understand it, but we know where we have gaps, you know, we have an issue right now as an example where. Um, we can't find a conservation agent very easily, and, and we also have a situation where Gino's retiring, so. We need to find a, a town planner, so. Um, it's not just an org chart so that we know who's who when we're at the Christmas party, we wanna know where we have gaps and uh. You know, how departments are working together, what we also wanna do is um. Uh, look at some of these regionalizations, not, not only the police dispatch center, but we, as people know, we're now doing regionalization in the. Board of Health with that, I forget the name of that alliance we're part of, Jeremy, and then we're. Um, maybe gonna do the same thing possibly on um, uh, conservation agents or planning board agents also. Um, look at some form of, uh, if not regionalization, at least collaboration with one or more towns, so. I think the org chart is uh. A, a map linked to the goals. And we know that our Ellen's been board of health. Uh, um, administrator, for goodness know, Paul knows how long, I don't know, probably thirty years at least. So we know that we have um some long tenured people, we just always have to have um the org chart also. Focused on succession planning too.
Uh, Jeff, sorry to interrupt, I just, I need to um check out for a little bit here, I just need to put my son to bed.
No worries, we, we are good at that, though, if you wanna have him just dial in, but Marion just joined us also, so we're okay.
Great.
So sorry for the long lead in, Jeremy. I'll let you.
No, thank you, Jeff. That helps with some context. Yeah, as as you know, this is one of the things that that you and Diane mentioned, you know, was needed and was actually highlighted by one of the last times the board did a. Set some goals for itself in two thousand twenty-one. It was one of the goals to. Update and it was actually formally update town organization chart and publish was what it stated.
Yeah, I wrote that. In an earlier life.
Here's, here's a, here's an attempt to do that. So I've I've put together, uh, working with town staff, department heads, you know, reviewing. Annual budgets, annual town reports, the town bylaws, the charters of the various boards and commissions, talking with residents. Talking with some of the select board members, just to to get. Uh, put together basically two versions of an org chart. The version here shown on the screen is sort of the higher level version, which is on a sort of formatted to be. To be able to be put in a an annual time report or a budget document, and it's more of the higher level. Showing sort of higher level who the elected bodies, who they appoint, the the functional. Groupings of of town personnel on on one sheet. And kind of trying to help summarize the appointed authorities of all the various boards and positions in one document. And then on it, on the second page is where you would see all of the the organization, organization and appointment authority. Of all the various boards and committees within the community. Um, so that's kind of the purpose of this high level, this high level org chart here. And then the second version is the is the more detailed version, which I'll scroll down to. Actually, I need to change to the to the next one. This is more of the traditional organization chart that that outlines every single position. A town staff position and where they 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 line up. And again, this was, you know, put together and vetted with department heads and. Uh, various town staff and and by researching documents. Let me zoom in a little bit. It's hard to hard to read here. It's it's a, this actually kind of prints out in like a two foot by three foot. Chart. But starting at the top. I mean, it shows that the residents and, you know, who they directly elect. Town moderator, town clerk shown in a certain symbol as an index key down at the bottom that kind of codes these symbols. Uh, but this this gray ovalish. Symbol is is they're elected directly from the residents of the town. Um, then it shows from those elected boards, their appointing authority, you know, who who they directly appoint. Scrolling over to the side here, you know, if included the the Sherburne School Committee, the Regional School Committee. You know, and their direct appointment, the school superintendent to the functional group of the school department, um, shown in this green box. But more relevant to the select board are your direct appointments. And then showing organizationally, you know, how the other various town staff members report up through your appointments. Um, to have shown under the town administrator. Um, as your, as your chief administrative officer. Showing the functional groups. Of community services, land use, finance, general administration. Public Works, Public Safety and the library. Uh, and then under those functional groups, you kind of get the detail of of each and every department, municipal department. Showing each each position. So a full-time position, a full-time position like the fire chief or the director of public works, shown with solid lines, red shaded solid lines. Uh, part-time position that's funded by, you know, less than forty hours is depicted on the org chart with dashed lines. And it also shows on the org chart what's been budgeted uh, in the current fiscal year budget. And actually, this has been updated. To reflect the F Y twenty-four budget effective July first.
It's also like, if you go back to the left of this, the land use office, what I like about it, it's a semi flow chart, it is sort of org chart because. The reason why we put all the land use people downstairs was that often their flow charts of who hands off on different inspections or different forms. Between, you know, CO or Concom and Board of Health and building inspector. There's a, there's a a flow of the work within that that or zone that you've shown there.
Right, you know, it's kind of under, not a formal department of land use, but.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Kind of all working together on on projects, so.
Yeah, yeah.
The org chart kind of shows that and, um, you know, I think things, some of the. Some goals that that I've been thinking of that you may consider in the next item might might help sort of.
Even, you know, even looking at that, you know, the 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 town records project sort of relates to that flow chart too, because everyone, you know, almost every file, every one of those people have. A copy of the same document, so we we start looking at town records by property rather than by department, we might. Uh, optimize that. So this is great. This is terrific.
So where positions have this number, like ten police officers that are showing the number, they're not, you know, individual boxes. Um, the call firefighters shown in yellow. Um, it is the legend. So, you know, it was an interesting. Was actually very helpful for me to put this together, um, to to kind of to to help visualize graphically. And because I'm a graphic person, I like to see things visually and get to know the departments and how they interrelate. Uh, so it was really interesting putting this together, so. Um, hopefully helping with one of your goals to 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 formalize this and and publish. I envision, you know, that publishing could be on the town's website, that, you know, the existing and the updated website. Um, you know, some versions of this could be in in a in a budget document, which has not been something we've done in the past, but. Something that I think we should move towards that, you know, after the budget adopted at town meeting, we put together a budget document that that we can publish, but. It's helpful to have sort of an some form of organizational chart in that. And also the town or annual report, you know, some version of this might be appropriate to go in there in a in a published form.
So can I make a comment before we leave this?
Sure, go ahead, Paul.
So if you step back and look at this, it it shows exactly the problem with our government and most. Town governments, which is the flat nature of it. If you look carefully, you see. After the residents of Sherburne, you have this row of equal committees, if you will.
Yep.
All of whom have important jurisdiction. And then you look to see where is the town administrator? Town administrator is way down in another row further down. So organizationally, this this says to me as a as a good government guru. You, we need it like a charter. We need to take a look at how we're organized. To to provide a little bit more horizontal and a little less vertical to consolidate things. Make this government more important. More coordinated. So that everybody's going the same direction and the town administrator needs to be moved up further. Uh, and perhaps the Board of Selectmen ought to be moved up a little further. So for example, I have one town where the Board of Selectmen appoints all the other boards and committees, appoints the Board of Health, appoints the Library Trustees, appoints all these people. And then you have an another town I have where the town manager appoints all these people and the town manager is. Is up on the top line. I mean, there's all kinds of different variations of the same, but a flat government is by definition. Unyieldly and and slow and expensive to operate.
Oh, I I somewhat agree. I mean, I think part of it's just the nature of the graphics here, though, also, you know, it's just because that one section isn't a lesser section, but it's so. Many subcomponents that it doesn't fit easily at the same level as all the boards, but. But it's a valid point because they're, you know, the town administrator, you is greatly involved in the library project or things like that, so it's, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, you have to, you have to hunt around for where is the town administrator? And it's.
No, no, it's a separate site. He's there, but. I think you have, this is, um, he's got this in a a standard drawing size format also, so I think he's sort of. May lose a little bit of the flavor by seeing it on a small screen on your laptop. But it's a valid point. We want to know. What the horizontals look like. That that's an issue.
We may want to send this to a government study committee. I I I think one of the goals was. Something about a government study committee, so we may want the government study committee to have this chart.
I don't know. We don't need any more committee. But anyway, okay.
It's, it was on the goals.
No, no, I know, I know, I know. It's probably gonna tell me to go to Collins, and I'm not a big Collins fan myself.
Well, there was, uh, the the government study committee, um, you know, you've had two in the past. Um, from from talking with the past chair of that committee. I I understand that that committee had envisioned to revisit within a certain amount of time. Um, and I I believe that that's coming up, so. Uh, that's one of the reasons I've put that and, you know, your thoughts for your goals is to. Uh, reconvenient that government study committee.
We might think about maybe printing some, even the select board members each a. Not all of these, but you know, one or two or three that are printed versions, so they can. Look at them offline.
So it was actually in doing this and in in some recent events, I I kind of used it, um, and these copies were sent to you as well, but.
Yeah.
Using the org chart as a tool. Just highlighted here for you what changes were were incorporated into the budget for F Y twenty-four that were included in. Um, you know, what town meeting approved. So I've got those positions circled here and I believe purple. Most of these were increasing the hours of some part-time employees in the Council on Aging. Um, adding actually, you know, adding some hours and adding, increasing the funding towards the conservation agent position. And increasing the number of hours for the Port of Health Administrator from thirty-five to forty, so to make that a clearly a full-time position. So it's kind of interesting to do that, so that's what's, you know, updates from from what you may have saw a few months ago. Into this version. Was also just looking at the vacancies that we have, so. We have a number of vacancies on town position, so here's the org chart with those vacancies, the positions that are currently vacant or soon to be vacant, highlighted in green. You know, you'll note that, you know, the retirement of Gino coming up was actually two of these circles in that he. Um, serves as the town planner and also has some sustainability functions. Recently, some turnover for the Recreation Facilities Director, that position is currently vacant. With the recent promotion of the Finance Deb to the Finance Director Town Accountant, the Assistant Town Accountant position is currently vacant. There's a collection clerk that's vacant. One skilled labor and and public works that's currently vacant, the assistant town town clerk is is vacant. That that's a position that's depending on the the elections of the year, you know, is is needed or not needed, and there was a little turnover. Currently Jackie's wants to feel out whether she needs to fill that soon or or wait. And then there's just, there's two vacancies. One actually just was made made aware to us today, our Youth Services Librarian is leaving, so there's two vacancies in the library.
Oh, really? That's a new one, Jess?
Yeah, she just moving to New York.
Ah, okay.
And of course, filling Liz's role as the former assistant director.
Yep.
Um, so do- doing that kind of led to the final one I wanted to show you tonight, which were some opportunities. Um, with these vacancies and turnover and, you know, looking again, using this org chart as a tool and. There might be some opportunities, so we we've. Had a number of conversations now about how to fill Gino's position as town planner. There was, he was, that position had been shared with with the town of Dover at one point. We have talked to the town of Dover. They're currently kind of, their their mind is set on a full-time. Uh, town planner, and actually, they're probably gonna go with a part-time assistant town planner as well. Um, so we've investigated that Medfield's town planner had left. And they had been searching for a town planners. We did talks to Medfield as well about sharing a planner, but now they've they've. Found a person to fill that position. The Conservation Commission Agent has been a struggle, as as Jeff mentioned, to to fill. We do have, you know, a very competent person sort of in that role now, but sort of limited number of hours. So. You know, the ideas come up, you know, instead of sharing a conservation agent with another community and a town planner with another community, why not share one person in the community? Between the Conservation Commission and town planner. Um, we've done some investigation of that and, you know, some really preliminary discussions with the various boards. And that those positions do exist out in in Massachusetts. There are some communities, Matapoison, for instance, has a has a position of conservation agent town planner. So it it does exist, so that model is is there and with our current struggles to fill that those roles, maybe there's an opportunity there. The, similarly, the Rec Commission has, you know, as a vacancy in their two part-time positions of the facilities director. They have a goal now to to possibly combine those two positions together into one position, so they're working on a. A new job description for that.
Christina Galot was in that group, wasn't she previously?
Yes, she was, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, of course, with Gino's retirement, you know, a portion of this town sustainability program is an opportunity. Um, in that, you know, eighteen hours were funded in the budget that had gone towards his salary. Uh, so there's an opportunity there for some from discussion. And then just more globally. And and maybe I'm a little biased towards Public Works. I I I do see that there's there's some need and I had some discussions. With Sean about this, but I do need to find some needs for for some additional help there in public work, so. Just thought I'd take the opportunity to kind of put some of those those opportunities out there as we're talking about the org chart.
No, that's great, I think, because it it ties into the goals and and that's why I call it a flow flow chart or chart. It's really pretty key. Dynamic aspects of it. Thank you. Any other select board comments? I think Marion, you're joining us now, haven't you? Maybe you can stop sharing for a second, Jeremy.
Well, before he stops, oh, uh, anyway.
Go ahead.
My my comment was sort of related to that chart. I have to say, Jeremy, this is really a great job. Uh, you know, all my time in Sherburne, we've never had it laid out so clearly, and I appreciate it so much. It it strikes me that uh, the town administrator problem, it looks like it's lower than all these elected boards, but in fact, you know, in. In practice, we know it's not. It's actually right up there, kind of on the same level as select board. It's really a three-dimensional chart.
Yep.
I think, uh, looking at governance, I think the biggest, especially with Jeremy in place. And a lot of communication among the various administrative departments, uh, the big. Sort of communication and connection problem that Paul mentioned, the major thing I see is among the boards and committees that are up there straying along the top. Planning, conservation, et cetera, et cetera, and we've always had a problem keeping up with what those other boards are doing, so. That's something that the governance task force certainly looked at that, but might take another look.
I don't think of it as flat, though. I think of it as galaxy with different planets, and maybe some planets have a few moons revolving around them, but that's how I. Envision it as three-dimensional, which is what Stephen said.
Yeah, it's three-dimensional, but you can't put that on paper, so I think Jeremy's done a good job.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think it's a good. Good stab. Okay. How how, I'm gonna interrupt you. How was the graduation speech?
How was my speech?
Yeah.
Well, you have to ask somebody else.
Well, no, but does it, do you enjoy doing it? Marion gave the commencement address tonight, guys.
Yeah, I did. I enjoyed it. It went fine. I mean, you know, I did it in ninety seconds. Yeah, I did. I enjoyed it. It went fine. I mean, you know, I did it in ninety seconds, Jeff, ninety seconds.
Ninety seconds. It took you ninety seconds to get up on the stage and back down again.
No, I think it went really well. But it's on YouTube, so you can take a look and check it out.
Oh, good. All right.
I got good feedback.
Good, good. How many do you know ballpark? How many, like a hundred fifty graduates ballpark?
Oh, I have no idea.
No idea.
But I have to say they're a very impressive group.
Yeah.
We can be proud of our graduates. They're really something.
Yep. All right. So do you want to go on to the goals then, Jeremy? These are all, as he brings this up, you know, food for thought, you know, we talked with Jeremiah talked about this was at least plant some bugs in our ears and we can be thinking about, you know, how we want to envision moving forward with both the org chart and the goals.
And that's right, Jeff. Really just food for thought, some observations. And and I've solicited input from the department heads and first time boards and committees and residents from meeting with them and just trying to put some ideas together for, you know, kind of food for thought for you. And kind of in in so doing, was also thinking that sometimes it's helpful to have sort of a sort of a vision and values sort of statement to help guide putting together, you know, goals. And, you know, it struck me that you had a very very good well put together master plan in nine and two thousand nineteen that had sort of had divisions in it that really relate to goals. You know, it had sort of what would they call? They were called guiding principles. So I kind of stole some of those from from that great document and put them together, sort of summarize in sort of a vision. Just to kind of help our minds put together, you know, think of some goals and sort of using that that well vetted document. And put in, you know, those those guiding principles of economic sustainability, land use zoning and housing. Town center and circulation, kind of an infrastructure component. Natural resources, open space and recreational resources and cultural resources. So those I I no pride of ownership, I stole those directly from the master plan. And then added sort of in your role as a select board, a section in the vision about community governments and engagement. So that that's, you know, the the beginning here is 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 my authorship. The rest is taken from your master plan.
But I really like the structure of it being the basis for the goals because it's really the word values is the right word you have there. And I think that that that's that's, you know, a higher level than the goals. So this is really some companies will be shorter, they call it their mission statement. This is really our mission, I think.
Yeah, in the master plan, that was kind of at the level of vision.
Yep.
The vision statements were basically just that.
Yep, it's pretty cool.
Yep. You know, one thing that we realize is miss was missing from the two thousand nineteen master plan was we had economic sustainability. We never had environmental sustainability.
Yeah, I knew that. I have a list I made tonight. That's one of them, sustainability.
And town center and circulation in the master plan actually was two separate sections because the town center alone is is kind of a major nut to crack. And then circulation, of course. It includes a lot of other things. So, but you know, I mean, it's that's nitpicking. This is looks really great.
Yeah, I I come, yeah, it took a little liberty and combine those for the purpose of this this draft here. And it's again, it's just it's food for thought. It's, you know, for your input and you know, editing. If you choose to adopt it, creative, if not, at least it's, you know, put our minds to thinking about about some goals and you know, in the context of of the vision for Sherburne.
Yeah, I think the thing that comes across to me is we may want to strengthen some wording around regionalization too, in addition to the town is looking at ways in which we not only share resources for other towns, but share the many trails and resources that we have with other communities. So I think that's sort of regionalization. We will probably find that we want to maybe add some emphasis to that because it gets that sustainability and affordability because we're now not doing everything one off in every town. We're doing things in a shared way that you know, maybe we at some point in the future have one transfer station, you know, that that has more complex transfer station like the one in Wellesley does and you don't have to have every single town have a transfer station. I don't know, but.
Yeah, and there's been studies looking at that. And yeah, I know personally from in in Medfield's case, there was studies of using Medfield's access to the rail for for collection of solid waste.
Yeah.
What so.
When I first moved, I moved to Wellesley, I want to tell you, I think it was nineteen eighty eight. They were sorting glass in nineteen eighty eight into ten colors. You had brown and green and clear. I mean, it was insane. My 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 other my other come up is I have like a fifteen year old Volkswagen. I had people coming up to the Wellesley transfer station and brand new Mercedes convertibles, you know, but still with their trash stacked in the back leather, red leather seats of the Mercedes convertible. So I wasn't used to that either.
For these goals, Jeremy, I I I like your list and I like that you've added governance. Because that really wasn't part of the master plan and that's something that's very select board relevant, I think.
Yeah.
Governments, governance and also regionalization. Those are two things that are something the select board could focus on more than any other board, I think.
Yes.
Can I add to what Marion said?
Sure, Paul.
When we talked before, when I talked before about the relatively flat level of government that we have and we need to make it more centralized. One of the goals that we have here is align town hall office hours and work schedules. And I referenced that because that to me is a perfect example of of where there needs to be centralization. I was on the board that built the new town hall. I renovated the town hall. And after all the construction was done, punch list done and all that stuff was done. The question came up, who's in charge? Who's in charge of saying when the town hall is open, when it's closed and and get everybody to have the same office hours? And we had all these organizations in town hall, each of which wanted to do their own thing. They wanted to work when it was convenient for them. And to align them all, there wasn't legal authority to require different boards and committees and offices to do what would make sense and what this goal is. So here we are like twenty years later. And the the same goal that we couldn't achieve before, we have down as a goal now. Fundamentally, in order to achieve that goal, you have to have more centralization. You have to, for example, empower the select board and the town administrator to control town hall. And set the the times and the hours and
Paul, I don't think is you're not in the you're not in the new world, though. There's a whole lot of people that never go to town hall because you can now pay for things online. You can get you can get your permits online. So it has to be reflective of how people access things now too. You you can get a burn permit online and and pay for it and not not ever go to town hall. So the office hours have to match. You know, what the what the customer needs are, I think.
You know, I I agree with Jeff, but I also do agree with Paul because it's not just the customers. It's the town hall employees in different departments being there at the same time and interacting within town hall. And that's a valuable thing as well.
Yeah, this is what every company is working on though, because some people need to work from home some of the time. So we're the the world's changing. I'm just telling you. It's not going to be everybody nine to five in one office. Anywhere.
Yeah, if I could, I'll just flip through some of these and just kind of
Yeah, yeah, please.
Give you some of the highlights of this.
Probably another five minutes at most if we can, Jeremy, because we probably shouldn't get.
Yep. So, you know, and this is all sent to you as well. I just wanted to kind of highlight what what these slides represent. And so that when you look at them on your own, you can get the context. So these were the 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 last time that the select board from the records and talking with Diane. The last time the select board had put together goals, they called it a mission and goals in two thousand twenty one. This is a compilation of them all, gone through to and and kind of crossed out ones that I think that you've addressed. And then the ones that are not crossed out are either ones that sort of are are ongoing as a as a just the reality of the of the goal or they haven't been addressed yet. So that was the purpose of this slide. And then here's that visions and value statement just put together to for the purpose of being in this slide deck. And then the the following slides are each of those those this is the community governments, potential thoughts on goals. The ones that are bolded on the top are carryovers from the two thousand twenty one goals. The ones that are not bold that are just other thoughts for 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 consideration. And that's the theme for the next several slides. So you, community governments, these are some thoughts on on goals. You know, for instance, there's, you know, the we talked about position town planner and conservation agent. Similar for engagement. Again, you know, the the high the bolded letters here are carryovers from the two thousand one goals that were not addressed or ongoing. And then there's some additional thoughts on goals for engagement.
The only thing I would characterize because of my corporate strategy work is these probably aren't goal. A goal is a higher level to me. These are a little bit more tactics to achieve a goal in some of these, not all of them, but some of them are a little bit more implementation oriented than a goal. In other words, a goal should be something that doesn't change like in six months. It's something that's a a longer term target in my in my lexicon, anyway.
Yeah, agreed. And it's sort of a brain dump here. So.
Yeah, no, this is very useful. I like that that you did that that way because then it 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 causes us to think more. So this was actually, I love the way you did it. I'm not being critical of this format. I'm just saying that part of the goals. You know, I have half a dozen goals and then some of these might fit under those goals and be a tactic for implementing that goal.
Similar for economic sustainability, you know, a number of of thoughts here.
Yep.
Land use and zoning and housing. Some carryover goals related to the Coolish Crossing projects. Town center and circulation and and some infrastructure. Natural resources, open space, concert, recreation and cultural resources. So just, you know, when you're when you're reading through these at your leisure. Yeah, that's sort of the format of how I put them together.
The one thing I wonder about, though, you know, we don't have anything, even though there's a separate, you know, administration and 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 boards. I mean, there's nothing eighty percent or seventy five percent of our revenue goes to the schools. There's no mention in here of the schools.
There are some.
We may have to, well, I mean, at a higher level, I'm not trying to find an example. If you think about it, you know, probably, you know, eighty percent of the reason why people want to live in Sherburne is at least where their new river is because of the school system. And then it probably it's the open space and trails and farm pond, you know, the natural beauty. So we may have, yet we don't have any goals to sort of support the schools. I I'm just thinking out loud.
Yep.
I don't know what that would entail, but you know, there there's could be different learning environments. You know, they're building that new sort of Matt Vitale's wife is leading it, that new learning center back of Pine Hill. That's and and we have an Eagle Scout who's putting solar panels on the roof of it.
Yep.
So so I would think we might want to think about, given how important schools are to the reason people live here and such a huge part of our budget, even though we don't direct it. Think about ways in which we could link to the schools a little bit.
Yeah, when we when we wrote the master plan, you're you're right, Jeff, when we wrote the master plan. We 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 thought about, do we include anything about the schools in there?
Yeah, no, I'm sure you did.
We did not. A little bit of of statistics in, but basically the schools are their own their own fiefdom. And I was reminded of that today, how little, you know, the town government that we work in is connected to what happens within the school committee and the schools.
Yeah, but I don't think that's even true. And I don't think it's the way it should be. If you think of you were on the committee with you when COVID hit, we had that sub team including Dover and our people from Boards of Health, you and I participated. And we had, I forget the name of that, the two Matts and the woman from the Board of Health were working with the school system on their COVID issues.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, we've done things like that. But anyway, what I see in this list of thoughts, I think it's just a great, great, it's a really good brain dump. That's what you want to call it.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is. Yeah, yeah.
So much raw material to work with. And if we want to work it over in into a different organization, fine. But there's a lot here and it really makes sense.
No, no, I I'm not dismissing it at all. I completely agree. But I do I do think we need to find ways to integrate with the school more and have the the school integrate with us.
I I do agree, yes.
You know, I know for my part, I'd like to set up some more, you know, I had started had a couple meetings with the school super tennis, particularly through the budget season. But I like to have sort of a more of a recurring meeting with her office. And and the boards could do something similar. I've seen other communities where they've they've had, you know, make a point out, you know, once a year have a joint meeting with the select board and school committee.
The advisory always does that because they have to jointly approve the budget for regional schools. All right. Well, thanks for getting it started. This was a really, really good research and I like the way it's laid out. So food for thought. I think we probably we spent a fair amount of time. I would try to move on, but any other select word comments or keep this on at least on your stove. It doesn't have to be the front burner, but keep it on the stove top. No, don't put it in the bottom drawer of the oven. All right. Thanks, Jeremy. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now, who who's leading on this special legislation for Mount Misery? Is that Sean or who?
If Sean's here, you can help me out, but I'm
Okay, go ahead.
willing to 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 take it on.
Go ahead.
So as you know, the the town has two cellphone towers that are on town property that are subject to leases. Mount Misery is is the one that actually has the longest duration of lease left. But we have received an inquiry from the currently see to extend the lease for twenty five years and and they are currently proposing in that that offer, you know, an additional, you know, staying with the current lease arrangement, but providing, you know, a bonus of twenty thousand dollars. Should we should the town enter enter that extension? Well, without special legislation that exempts us from thirty B, we wouldn't be able to negotiate directly with that lease company. We would need to go out to public bid, do an RFP or or the like to do a public bid. So in talking with town council, they're suggesting that if we wanted to take advantage of negotiating with, you know, the currently see who has equipment there, they have an interest to to stay there. And they've they've revealed their hand by submitting that was a letter that's in your packet and requesting that extension and offering a the town a twenty thousand dollar bonus. To be able to do that and to to negotiate and enter a contract with the DC, we would need special legislation exempting us from the provisions, chapter thirty B. So that's what the the proposal is. The town council has drafted this special legislation that's in your packet. And they also believe that at town meeting in two thousand twenty two, town meeting had two or articles related to cellphone towers, one for each location. But that that town meeting authorization gave the select board a fair amount of leeway in to take actions to exercise the leases. Particularly take any action as maybe necessary under sale law to effectuate such lease, pass any vote or take any action there too. So town council feels that town meeting gave the select board authority to file for Town council feels that town meeting gave the select board authority to file for this special legislation should you desire.
Can I comment on that?
Sure, Paul. Are you finished, Chairman? Let me just make sure he's finished. Are you finished, Jeremy?
Yeah, that's that's good. I'll speak a little bit more on the other location. Afterwards, but I won't won't cloud this current discussion.
Okay, Paul, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt your flow.
So. I defer to town council on issues, but I'm quite familiar with the general court. And I worked for three different speakers of the House and so on and so on. They're going to want to see. A town meeting vote on this and and the town meeting vote says within state law. Whereas the whole point of a home role petition is to change state law. And. And so. While I appreciate the sort of advocacy position the town council is taking, I don't think the legislature will buy it. So. My thought here would be, yeah, go forward and do what you want, but I think we were talking about a fall town meeting, weren't we at some point or?
It's it's a pretty strong possibility. Yes.
So I would add. Specifically, a home role petition to that. Uh, this is not likely anything the legislature will take any action on this anyway. The that's the other problem is often a year before you get home rule petitions passed. And if you're negotiating with somebody now. It's going to be irrelevant essentially. By the time it gets enacted, if it gets enacted. So. It's conceivable to set things up to be twenty years with a a right to. Extend it for five years and try and characterize it as a twenty year. So this this kinds of words that you could use that. That maybe you can get by without the legislation. Just some random thoughts here, but I don't think it's going to go as smoothly as. As. This town council might be thinking.
And a special legislation is because Sherburne's small, but special and stuff of one time exemption, so you're not looking for framing to exempt the thirty B as a whole. I mean, every community want to do that. I get that. But like Framingham got a special legislation passed to make street acceptance easier to get whatever is chapter eighty or whatever the number is, and they did the same thing. Just, you know, to allow these certain provisions under certain circumstances, you could, you know, bypass a more cumbersome regulation to make something easier. And I've never seen a special issue passed with Sherburne, to be honest, but I've seen it with Framingham several times. So. Um, I think it's worth a shot, to be honest. Depends how good our our legislator is. I mean, we have one new guy, maybe give it to her, see if she'll do it.
Okay, Sean, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I I had a couple comments. One, actually, at the tail end of what Paul said, I want to clarify, this is not. I I think he might have either he either misspoke or misunderstood. This isn't to get to twenty five years so that we have five year extension. This is to go twenty five years out. So we had twenty years from the initial lease. And they proposed twenty five. I don't think we're ever going to go to twenty five, but it it would re up another twenty. So that we we have what what the cell carriers can consider as a long term lease. Because we're going to go under ten in a in a year or two. Uh, so this would be twenty years from from now or from whenever we negotiate, not not just an initial, an an additional five. Uh, and the reason this one's important, and and I'm not going to, I'm going to let Jeremy weigh in on the on the rest of it and kind of how we played out. Um, the next steps with the other cell tower. The reason this one's somewhat important is is because we. If we don't have this, we really can't put it out to bid on under a thirty B because we're still under lease for another ten years. The problem with with cell towers is when you're under ten years, you really don't have a long term lease. So there's no opportunity to expand the sales of that tower. There's only one carrier on that tower. And when you go under ten years, they won't be able to solicit a second carrier. So the reason we brought this to town meeting a couple of years ago was to open that opportunity up, and we have that opportunity now. Possibly, you you know, with an offer to go out twenty years. Verizon will stay on that tower and maybe AT&amp;T first net will go on it or, you know, somebody else. So that allows that opportunity. If we put it out to third, we can't really put it out to thirty B because we have to break the lease that's already there. Because that lease extends out to twenty, I think it's thirty two. I don't remember with a year, but. But there's only one person that can, we can only negotiate with one person. So in good faith, it's not a thirty B negotiation. We need the exemption if we're even going to play ball. Otherwise, we just stare at the wall until the lease extent, you know, ends like we're we did on Brush Hill. And, you know, you stand to lose some money by doing that because you don't have the opportunity to expand and you make money on the second carrier. So I'll hand it back to Jeremy, but those those are my points there.
Yeah. Thanks, Sean. Yeah, the way that that the lease structure is structured currently for this is the Mount Misery Tower we're talking about. The the. Is like the town gets of of twenty one thousand dollars per year and and fees, and if there's additional carriers, there's actually additional revenue that comes in. So there's an incentive. For the town to get more revenue if you allow more carriers and to have. More certainty on the duration of the lease, the carriers would be more apt to to add more carriers to their towers.
Do they ever share resources? Like, can they share a standby generator, for example, or something like that, or they have to completely because of rate base, keep them completely separate?
It was a single generator at that tower.
Yeah.
And that was built into the master lease. We have, we have access to that.
Yep.
It it powers the whole the whole system.
Yeah, that's good.
And they maintain it.
Yep. So what do you recommend that we maybe take Paul's comments and. Probe town council a bit further, or what would you recommend we do?
Oh, we could certainly do that.
Well, I'm 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 asking, I'm not, I'm not directing. I mean, I don't know.
Well, the the problem, what I was trying to do was speak in legal terms and not.
Yeah.
The engineering stuff that Sean was mentioning, that it's the constitution of the Commonwealth that requires. That. Legislation for home role. Get local approval first, if it's for one community. And. When you're dealing with the constitution of the Commonwealth, even the general court doesn't have any discretion. So I. I'm like seventy eighty percent sure that they won't accept. That two thousand twenty two vote as being compliant with the constitution. That that's all I was saying. So I am recommending that we renew that. But there's another exemption that's probably more effective. That is, yes, you need to get a town meeting vote for home role petition. But there is another way to do that. The constitution also says that you can ask the governor of the Commonwealth to submit it. And if the governor submits it, you don't need a local vote. You can simply ask Mar Haley to introduce it. As a courtesy to the town. Then you don't need the legal analysis and you know that that's authorized by the constitution.
Well, not only that, I mean, it seems to me that having the town meeting and and all that other stuff is irrelevant because. This lease won't then get negotiated. In other words, if we follow that process you describe, and I don't have any doubt that that's the process. Then we could, it's not worth following the process because we won't be able to do the deal we need to do to add cell tower capacity, you know, other vendors.
That's why I'm saying if you if you, I haven't talked to Mar in a while, but if somebody just calls her and asks her to introduce it. I'm I'm pretty sure she would.
All right. So do you want to talk offline with Jeremy and perhaps with Chris Petrini and and come up with a plan? What are you recommending for next steps?
Well, I think again, I defer to them, their town council. I'm a town council in Sherburne.
Well, I I I realize that, but but I think maybe that you could at least express your concerns. So maybe they could rethink their position or reanalyze their position based on your input and your experience.
You got, I think, Paul, you're the only one suited in this room that probably understands what you just said. I think you. Like, I'm not the engineer for the library, but yet I sit on a committee and advise them, you know what I mean? So.
And Paul, you can always speak at us as a select board member.
Yeah. But we need to get something done here is what Sean's told us. So. I like I like the governor idea, but we might then have to figure out what what do we need to supply her with.
I think if I could, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, please do, Sean.
If Paul doesn't want to reach out directly, me and Jeremy can take back his comments. I mean. We had, we had two different attorneys from Petrini Law. Uh, on the on the call the other day discussing exactly this. Um, and they, you know, they had town meeting vote from twenty twenty three and or twenty twenty two. And they felt like it fit in within the four corners of that boat or the motion. If it doesn't, then, you know, it warrants that. It's it's worth just bringing back to them. I think Jeremy could probably bring back Paul's concerns if Paul doesn't want to. Do it directly with Petrini.
Well, what I'm trying to say is lawyers' opinions don't matter here. What's going to matter is the. The. Speaker. And the committee on third reads. And and House Counsel. And I. Those are the opinions that count. And I think at the end of the day, we go through all the stuff, spend all this time with lawyers. We get comfort that, oh, this should work, this should work. And then we find out. It gets stuck in a committee who doesn't agree. Doesn't agrees with giving us the relief, but doesn't agree that they can do it. And. So that's why I'm saying a sure way to go. That would get us a hundred percent where we want. Is to have the governor do it.
So can Jeremy, can Jeremy and Sean talk to you offline on how we go about getting the governor to do it?
Yeah, I mean, the governor doesn't, all governors do it. So.
Yeah, no, no, I get it, but we're just trying to figure out what the next step is where we're trying to get.
I think the the language of the bill is fine. So that all the governor needs is the language of the bill.
All right.
And she can introduce it as a bill, and then you've cleared the hurdle. And that the question only is getting it enacted.
Legislative session?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else on that, Jeremy? Are you?
Uh, no, I if the board's in support of that, we can, you know, one, either just follow up with town council, but also pursue the submitting something to the governor's office if the board. Supports that.
Seems seems, tell me what you think, Sean. It seems like the only way that we'll have enough time to then sign new deals. All right.
Um, so unfortunately.
On that, do we need to vote to allow?
That would be helpful if you took a vote, that would be.
I guess I don't know exactly what, I was wondering if we should wait for twenty ninth and you'll figure out what the wording and emotion should be what we're allowing, but. Do you want to make the motion for us, Paul?
Well, just as I was sitting back thinking about what you just said. Even if we get it to the legislature, the odds of it getting enacted in time is low. That's why I was suggesting that. I've seen lawyers work around. Issues by using the right words in in leases.
Yep.
So there may be a non legislative solution here. That is immediate, and you don't have to wait for the legislative process because no matter how you get. It's 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 like, uh, to use an analogy. How do we get onto the football field? What do we do it by saying we don't need a town meeting voter? Do you have the governor do it? But now you're in a football game. And you've got to go for quarters before you have what you need. And what Sean is saying is we don't have that.
We don't have that in the halftime show, someone parachutes onto the field. I know, I know, I got I got your analogy.
So there may be a non legislative solution is what I'm saying, and that's what they should talk to town council about.
All right.
Is there a way? Something back on your twenty nine, your your next meeting. Unfortunately, of the two cellphone towers, the one we were just talking about is the easier one to resolve.
Yeah, the other was.
Brush Hill Tower of Hunting Lane has other issues similar. In in that if we wanted to negotiate with the currently see, we would need that at the same same exemption. Um, but the other more complicating aspect is that it sits on property that's covered by Article ninety seven, chapter ninety seven property. And there's a new process through the executive office of environmental affairs that. That that we will need to go through prior to seeking special legislation for. The the right to lease that that tower extend that lease. So.
That's good information.
But.
I'm a little mindful of that.
Complicated.
It is, but it's also not on the agenda is what I'm a little mindful of. You know, we specifically just listed the Mount Misery one. So I don't want to discuss it for that reason primarily. So let's go on to the consent agenda. Is that all right, Jeremy?
Yep.
All right. Do I have a motion on this consent agenda? I think the only thing we have to concern ourselves with is the next meeting dates, which is. I think we've agreed on the twenty ninth, and the people feel like the two weeks after that, July thirteenth would work. Is anyone? Marion, you're back the twenty ninth, you said, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And we often have to have to do when they close out the budget year, there's sometimes some reserve fund transfers and things that. Dan and Stephen are both here, but. We usually want to have a meeting once the. Finally, year end bills come in in early July.
You said twenty ninth and thirteenth, you said?
It says the thirteenth. I'm just reading on the agenda. Yeah, it would be June twenty ninth and then July thirteenth.
So I can't make.
You can't make what?
The thirteenth.
You can't do July thirteenth, you can't do.
Correct, yep.
Well, we may have to see, because we do have to do year end transfers in a certain period of time, I think, so we could possibly just have four of us.
Yeah, and like unless there's something critical or, you know, why does five of us?
Let's see what the agenda is. Okay.
Well, if Eric's not there, I'm going to move to put him on the Leland Farms Committee.
All right, that's fine. We'll make the agenda reflect that. But so do I have a motion of respect to the consent agenda?
Move approval.
All right, second.
Second.
All right, Eric.
Hi.
Steven.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Marion.
Hi.
And I might as well. We've got a a five person vote tonight now. That's good. So are there any select board reports? I don't have anything new. I've been in Chicago where are we gonna have? I didn't do anything. Maybe select board reports? Going twice. All right. Any town administrator reports? You filled us in on a lot, Jeremy.
Uh, yeah, just two quick updates or two quick reports. Um, so good news in that the East Coast Greenway Alliance, I'm not sure if the the board is aware, but they're advocating for a. Pedestrian and bicycle pathway, you know, along the coast of the east coast of Massachusetts of the United States from Maine to Florida, three thousand miles. Uh, they've just recently changed their the course, the direction that will take through Massachusetts. And that's now going to include, and they've just adopted their Board of Trustees, the Halston Rail Trail. And the portion of the Sherburne Rail Trail, and that would continue on and through Framingham. Um, that's good news in that there's a that will actually bring a lot more advocacy for the for the state to. The rail alignment up through Sherburne into Framingham and to and to build out the Upper Charles Rail Trail. So I think that's good news for Sherburne and and trail advocates. Um, and the other update is just that we submitted a grant application today, Gina put one together. For supplemental funding for the Maple and Washington Street intersection. Submitted that to the the one stop shop for growth of the Commonwealth. Um, for five hundred thousand dollars. We should know if we're successful by October, November to receive those funds. With the receipt of those funds, we would have enough funding to to do the improvements at that intersection. So.
Great.
Your fingers crossed.
Trick or treat.
Good job, Jeremy.
Yeah, and and convey that. Yeah, and and convey that to Gino as well. All right, everybody. So I have a motion to uh.
A journey.
A journey. All right.
I can save it.
All right, Eric.
Hi.
Steven.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Marion.
Hi.
And I might as well. Thank you, everyone.